Welcome to the January 9th meeting of the Hampton School Board. Will we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you all for coming. I will ask you to keep your comments brief as we want to get out of here and so that everyone that doesn't live in the area can go home and arrive safely so they can come back for an exciting ride tomorrow morning. So, is there any public comment? There being no public comment, I will remind the public that the time for public comment on the Warren Articles and Budget is Thursday night at the Hampton Town Office down in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. It begins at 7:00 and all are welcome. That is your chance to give your comments on the school budget and also the town budget. All right. Could we now have Chief Reno up?
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. Behind me I have Detective Terenzoni and Detective Connors, two of the three SAU 90 School Resource Officers in attendance with us today. I just want to take a quick moment and just give a little bit of an update on how we've been doing as far as planning goes with school safety-related topics. So first and foremost, I'm sure you're all aware, but especially in our region, we're very lucky having an SRO in all of our public schools has put us head and shoulders above other communities. It pays dividends in the long run and we've seen that. I was a School Resource Officer starting in 2008. I did that for four years and I still see people in the community, parents and students alike, who will still, they're comfortable approaching us, they're comfortable coming to us when they have problems. Their first interaction with the police officer was not when they got pulled over or if they got arrested for doing something wrong. And these gentlemen, as well as Detective Felch, do a phenomenal job continuing to build on those relationships. Outside of the relationships of the SROs in the school, we work together with the administration here within the SAU as well as SAU 21 and Sacred Heart Schools to ensure that we're providing the highest level of public safety for our students and our staff. We meet frequently. We met this summer as we have for the past number of years. We've met frequently throughout the year with the administrative team to develop best practices for providing safety within the school buildings. That includes ALIS training. So our School Resource Officers, as well as a number of administrators, are trained ALIS instructors and we found that to be very critical to have that number of people to be able to train the staff and students appropriately. We've been working for a number of years now trying to get that up to speed, making sure that we're continuously training and making that a routine practice for the staff and the students in the building. So again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to do that. Aside from that, at the Police Department, we have a core group of officers that are not School Resource Officers that are also focusing on the safety within the schools. So those are officers that are trained on our tactical team. They're our trainers. They are experienced police officers and we look at the best practices for how a police department is going to respond to a critical incident inside of a school. We hope that it never happens, but we've been working very diligently, not only within the Police Department, but also with the school administration, to make sure that if anything unfortunately ever does happen in Hampton, that we're ready, we're willing, and we're able to effectively respond to those critical incidents. And then we've also been talking about some issues that are not unique to those critical incidents but are sometimes overlooked in planning processes such as reunification. And we've been doing a lot of focus on reunification as we've seen in some of these incidents within schools where they do a mass evacuation, that reunification aspect of things tends to be the part that's overlooked or where there's a lot of chaos in that process. So we've been working really hard to develop some best practices there, looking at some regional options as well as things that we can do here and partnering with some of our private sector folks to have some resources and some places for our kids to be able to go to that's safe and out of the way of where the major incident may occur. So that's it. I'll keep it brief. I do appreciate again you having us here. Is there any questions for myself or any of the SROs regarding any of the school safety items?
Any questions?
Thank you very much. You feel free, please, to reach out to us at any time or our SROs are very knowledgeable on all this stuff, so please don't ever hesitate to reach out.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
I just have one comment. I've already said this, but I'll say it again. Happy Law Enforcement Appreciation Day to all of you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Have a great day.
All right. We'll now get a report on the My Voice survey from all three schools. So that would be Mr. Lannan, Mr. Sadler, and Mr. Hawkins.
Tonight, we'll just give a quick overview. You have our reports. You have, all three of us submitted reports to you as part of our packets on a quick summary of how we did on the My Voice survey. My Voice as a recap is a survey that goes out to staff, to students, and to parents. At Center School, it's only two of those components because the children do not participate due to their age, just from third grade and up. Just a quick overview again what My Voice is. This is, I believe it's my fourth time giving this My Voice survey in my tenure here. It's not a be-all, end-all tool that we use that makes significant immediate change. It's a tool that provides some overarching information to us that helps guide us in our day-to-day instruction and our day-to-day interactions with students and with parents. Three overarching themes in My Voice are developing self-worth is one. The second one is fostering engagement and learning. And then the third one is encouraging a sense and purpose. And what we did is decided to just throw out to you some of the highlights of the strengths and weaknesses. When you look at any survey, there are some strengths that you need to look at, there are some areas of weakness, and there are some target areas that we can develop and build upon. And we decided, as the three of us were talking about how to at least present it to you, is to put it into a grid like we do with our goals grids that we have. So you have our goals grids right there. So I'll go over mine real quickly with you, some strengths and weaknesses, then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues and maybe after all three of us have spoke, if you have any questions or concerns, you can talk to us after we've all presented. At Center School, the first area that I won't talk about is the center all-staff. Remember, it's not teachers, it's all-staff that participate in this survey. It's teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, cafeteria workers, support staff. All adults that have access to work at Center School have the opportunity, if they wish, to participate in this survey. Some areas of strength, which is great to see and it's a good trend that's been happening at Center School, is, school is a welcoming and friendly place. We want you to know that this continues to be a strong trend at Center School. And also bullying, it says, I think bullying is a problem. Look at that in the inverse. It's not a problem. That's a strength that it's not really a problem. That was really not at all. You know, we're lucky that we're a pre-K through grade-two school anyway. And we do a lot of self-correcting and we do teachable moments and we do a lot of bully prevention at the school. So that's a strength that we feel that at Center School is going well. Schools are welcoming and inviting place. I am proud of my school of some things that they did really well at Center School. This is from the staff. I actively encourage students to participate in good citizenship. Also, another one is professional development is an important part of my growth, so they feel that's really important to them. And another strength, that was a highlight that stood out, was staff work in a collaborative manner. And then another avenue, our school is a dynamic and creative learning environment. So those are some nice things to hear about the school. Now, all schools have areas that have targets. It doesn't mean that it's 99% in that area. It's just areas that weren't as strong as the strength areas. They can agree, strongly agree, undecided, which is a huge window for people. A lot of people decide, they don't know, it doesn't really affect them, and then disagree or strongly disagree. So very rarely are we in the disagree or strongly disagree area. You either like it or you agree with what's going on or you really don't have an opinion. That's what undecided is. It's funny to see that some people, because remember, not all teachers, it's not all one category taking a survey, meaningful professional development opportunities exist in my district. It's hard, every year that I've given this survey, it's hard to get fine-tuned professional development for every types of certification in the district. That's just the teachers. Then you get the paraprofessionals to find opportunities for them all the time, the cafeterias, the custodian people, the secretaries need to all grow. So that's something that is a lot of undecided in that area. They didn't really know how to answer that area. So that's an area that we continue as a school need to look at. I have a voice in decision-making. We do a lot of group collaborative decision-making. No one really has the one individual voice, so I need to work on how we can make sure that everybody's voice is continually heard. This is something a lot of the schools got. We communicate effectively and this doesn't mean we don't communicate. There are multiple modalities for communication and how people receive information. Communication is listening as well as receiving information as well as giving information. So sometimes you get people that will say, "I didn't know that that was happening." That's just common. So this is something that every survey that we've given, that's something that we all continue to work on. In another one that is something that has been happening nationally, it's a trend nationally. "I am excited about my future career in education." Some people are waffling on that. That's a trend that we need to look at. "And continuing my education is important to me." Those are national trends that are happening right here at Center School as well. So that's something that we'll continue to try to foster, a positive way to make sure that they want to continue and grow as a leader and as a teacher or as a paraprofessional, to give them opportunities to do that. So again, not like down low strengths. It's just an area that I want to focus on at Center School and Jamie and I want to focus on. And then on the right-hand side of my report, there are some action steps that get really a little bit more specific or some things we could be doing. Not today, not like tomorrow morning, I'm going to go in and do that. That's over the next six months. We're going to continue to use this data. It guides us. It's always there. We'll talk about it in committees. We'll talk about it at staff meetings. We'll talk about it at informal conversations. And then a few pages down, we have some more strengths on parents and caring adults in some areas that the parents really felt strong about. They feel welcome in school. They're proud of the school. They feel that parent evenings are really important. They enjoy being, my child enjoys being at school. If I have a problem with my child's school, someone at school is available to help me. Teachers believe in and accept my child to be, expect my child to be successful. Those are good feelings to have. There really weren't many, many areas of weaknesses to even report on. I reported them in the report to you only because developmentally it doesn't match. Remember, this is a survey that's pre-K through grade-12. It's a general survey, same questions, same questions for parents, same questions for staff. So some of these ones, my child's classes helped them understand what's happening in everyday life. We really don't get too deep into that as much as Center School, so that, obviously, parents are unsure about that, so they didn't know how to answer that. Current events, again, we're still learning A, ah, B, buh. We're not really getting there at Center School, so it doesn't really apply as much. "My child takes responsibility for completing homework." Homework is a shared experience at Center School. It's not really an independent activity yet, so that's why there's some ambiguity on that. And "my child likes challenging assignments." That's something that everybody needs to take, be aware of, that we must always continually differentiate our instruction to meet the needs of all learners in the room so that way if there are kids that may be a gifted, that we're meeting those needs. So that's something we'll continue to challenge. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues right now and they'll do a quick overview.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So as Mr. Lannan was saying, the data is helpful because it's kind of an opportunity to sit back and reflect and look at things from different lenses. As administrators, we kind of look at how things are going and we get the vibe in the sense from all the committee meetings and meetings with staff, but really this gives you three different focal areas or kind of lenses to look at things through. So Mrs. Henderson and I went through and highlighted some stuff that you have in your report and I won't go through it as in-depth, but I'll talk more about what we're doing with it. We've collected the data now what. We started last month meeting with our staff and gave them the full copy of the student data because for some of them, it's the first time they've ever seen the My Voice survey and whether they weren't in the district before or even if they had, they might have been shared just tidbits of the data. So we decided to start with students as sort of the most impact that we can have as adults at our school. And going through that, we split people up into small groups and asked them to kind of focus on some areas and now we're taking all of that information and looking to see how it matches up with what we thought were the highlights. The other nice thing about looking at three different groups is you can kind of look for overlaps. You know, we sort of crosswalk things. So if there's something the parent said that was a strength or an area in need of improvement that was also in the student area and in the teacher, it's sort of like what's our most bang for our buck and what should be a focal area for us as a school to kind of figure out where do we want to go from this. You know, in the past and moving forward as well, we'll be using some of the student data with the students, soliciting information from them. And then along with doing it in a whole staff committee, some of these are really focused on school climate. So that would be our school climate committee that would take over that one. I saw some things about meaningful professional development, so how can we give more of a voice and leadership to our school-wide professional development committees that feed into the district-level ones to create those opportunities for staff? And as Mr. Lannan said, we try to differentiate about, you know, what an art teacher might need compared to a math teacher or someone else in your building, it can get a little tricky on that end. But it does give us a nice overview of things that we're doing well. You know, it's easy to kind of look at some of the areas of strength and it's good that teachers, students, and staff are all kind of feeling the exact same things. And then what we did is when we looked at some of the areas in need of improvement, we looked at what are those, not only the big bang for your bucks, but what are the low-hanging fruit? What can have the immediate impact on? And then what also needs to be more of a long-term goals? So we started splitting these up as a group into short-term, what's in the next couple of months, and long-term, what's going to need to be built this year to impact next year or moving forward and things like that. But again, it's just a great opportunity to get some more information about how we're doing as a school. And I think there's always room for growth even when you, you know, kind of feel like you're doing really well. I know when Dr. Cost and I worked together, one of the things we would have the students do every year is, you know, Marston's a great place, what can we do to make it better? So we would focus on areas like this and look at, here's some things that a lot of students were seeing and get feedback directly from them. And it just kind of helps you when you're planning out things and making sure that it's actually going to be meaningful and beneficial for students.
And mine, I put next to your microphones before the meeting started. I like the data that we collect from surveys like this because it does give you a general direction. It gives you information that, you know, you don't get on a day-to-day basis from test scores and things like that. It's what students feel like when they're at school and what are some of the areas that we really need to focus on from them when they're giving us their opinion about what their day is like and what they feel like is lacking or needs improvement on. If you read through the student survey, the one thing that popped out to me the most is students having a voice. Students being part of a discussion or, you know, assisting the school and saying, "This is what we like, this is what we don't like." So creating a mechanism for that, this year, we, the Student Council has over 35 kids in it, really trying to hone in on having them as school leaders assist in, you know, getting some information from them and also starting at a tier-one level with our advisory program and really starting to talk about some of the aspects of the day as students go through it, whether it's the sense of belonging or the sense of accomplishment, the curiosity and creativity. A lot of that, a lot of the feedback that we've been getting from this survey is directly around students having that opinion, students being heard. So that's the number-one thing that comes out for me, at least for the students. Parents, one of the things that stood out for me was, you know, making sure kids are prepared for that next step and having them have a better understanding or more of a buy-in to the things that they are learning about and how it's going to affect them. How are they going to use this in the future? Future goals for their kids. Seventh grade does a huge unit on, you know, shadowing at jobs and learning about all of the different areas that they can go into after high school and when they graduate from college later on. So to me, that also goes along with that student voice piece. So there is one main theme that I'm building on when I read through it. One of the things is also parents having that input piece. My hope is that if we continue our meetings with parents on a monthly basis, bringing teachers in, especially after digesting this information, that getting their perspective on different things that are going on in the school is going to assist us moving forward with that. The teachers, I think that we're right along the same lines as Mr. Sadler and Mr. Lannan, sometimes around professional development. We have a large staff and sometimes we have one professional development that fits everybody and I think people are looking for other avenues or opportunities. So just being able to work through some of that. The other thing is, I'm going to be starting my second year here in February, getting to know the staff. It takes a little while to build that trust. It takes a little while to get to know everybody. And Mr. Westfall is new this year, so definitely an area that was a theme with teachers also. So always good data and look forward to moving on with next steps. Does anybody have any questions for any three of us?
Have any questions for Mr. Hawkins? Have any questions for Mr. Sadler? And Mr. Lannan? Thank you all for coming. Does anyone on the board have a report? Again, just remind everyone that the Public Budget Committee hearing is on Thursday night, begins at 7:00 in the Select-
I think it's at 6:00.
6:00?
It's at 6:00.
It's at 6:00?
Yes.
Okay, 6:00. It will be at 6:00. Hopefully, the school board will go first, but we haven't got that word yet. But it will be both the town and school budget, 6:00, Selectmen's Meeting Room downstairs. Okay. All right. Is there anything, Mr. Lannan, that you didn't do in your rec, in the voice that you need to talk to us? Okay, thank you. Mr. Sadler? Do you have anything that wasn't in the My Voice that you want to tell us?
Oh, I can break it off?
Yeah.
I would love to.
Okay. As long as it's short and sweet.
It's going to be short and sweet. Just a couple of events coming up for us at Marston School. Our Grade 5 spelling bee is going to be on January 24th, so hopefully we'll get to bring our winner to the school board in, you know, a following month to kind of share their progress and how they do at the next level. Students select, students I should say, 50 students have been selected in Grade 4 to participate in NAEP, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, the Nation's Report Card. We don't really get any school-specific data, but it's compiled with New Hampshire and then they rank New Hampshire comparative to the other states. So as soon as we get that report, we'll be sure to share that out. And just some good news, we'll be having our Great Kindness Challenge from January 22nd to 26th. It's part of the National Great Kindness Challenge. It's just a real strong emphasis that month and then moving forward on pro-social behaviors and kindness and bully prevention and all of those great things. But otherwise, it's just, you know, January in an elementary school. It's exciting times.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins, do you have anything else that you'd like to add? The number of checks we have to approve.
Yep, we'll do it. We'll do it. We got it.
Okay. I thought we'd do it right now.
Okay. All righty. Starting with Center School. Yep.
Box tops, thank you. So from Principal Lannan, a $45.90 check from Box Top.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay.
And we have three for Marston School. We have $889 from Gescus Photography. We have $500 from the PTA and $320 from the Hampton PTA.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Okay.
That might be it. I don't think-
Those are all the ones I have.
Yep. That's it. There's nothing at Hampton Academy, correct? Principal Hawkins? Assistant Principal Westfall? No? Okay. We do not, we do have a check that we also for the district. Do you want to do that one now or you want to wait?
Sure.
Okay.
Do that one now.
So you have in your report on, this is on, following page 56, "We are seeking permission to accept a check for $20,000, which is part of our cable franchise fees from the town of Hampton."
Our motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second? Okay, second. All those in favor? Thank you, cable viewers.
Thank you. Those are our, that's what we have.
All right. Dr. DeSilva Napkin, do you have a report?
No.
Okay.
I don't have a report.
Okay. Your numbers are growing and-
We're up to 19% of our population, special ed. You do have a breakdown as to how they're all identified, but we are holding steady. That's all I can report today.
All right. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Frank, have a question.
I've noticed that since September-
Yes.
-you picked up five additional students. I mean, it did branch out, you lost one or two, but overall, it's a plus-five for your department.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And again, the question I have is your department is adequately staffed because obviously the progression is that it's growing.
That is correct. So at this point, we are at our maximum capacity. If we get another identified child, I'm going to have to come to the board for more staff. We are stretched. We've done a really good job making do with what we have, but yep, we are, we're stretched. But we're doing it. We are, everyone's getting their faith, we're doing what we need to do, and I don't want to burn out the staff. So we have to be very careful, make sure we don't put too much on their plate.
Can you clarify if that would be which school? Are you talking in general?
Well, no, I'm just saying if. If we were to receive another identified child at whatever grade, we don't have any more paras. And when we get new students, we have to relook at how everyone is being used, look at all of our resources, and we move things around to see what we can do differently. We group kids differently. We have the teacher seeing them differently. So we've been doing that when we receive these kids and we cannot do that again this year. So hopefully, nobody will move into Hampton with an identified child.
How many children are in process?
At this moment, we have only three, which is a good thing. But we have seven referrals.
So there's 10?
This month, potentially.
I was just about to ask, what's the difference between a referral and in process?
That's a great question. So a referral is something that's within- That's a great question. So a referral is something that's within the first 10 days. If someone says, "I want my child tested," that's considered a referral. After the first 10 days, we have to hold a meeting within 10 days. So after 10 days, it either becomes in process, which means we're going to move forward with testing because we think we need to do that, or we close the referral and say, "No, we need to back up and do some interventions," or are there, is there something else we can do differently before we move to testing. So referrals are the immediate 10-day option, and then the in-process can last up to 60 days. We have 60 days to do our testing. We usually get it done between 45 and 50 days. Then we hold a meeting to find out if they're eligible. If they meet the criteria, then they become identified. You're welcome. That's a great question. Thank you.
So do you work closely with early interventions so that you're aware of who's turning three and how many are turning three and when-
Yes.
-you have to take those in?
We do. We work very closely with them, and those referrals are coming fast and furious.
I know they are.
It's amazing. And Jamie does a great job-
Yep.
-coordinating the preschool. Thank you, Jamie. And we do have a phenomenal preschool program. And we, again, those numbers are holding steady, but that's because kids have come and gone, come and gone, come and gone. But we do have, we have referrals there. And I would say over half of the referrals right now are preschool.
Oh, that, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So that's good to know.
And unlike the private sector or private schools, public schools have to provide services under federal law. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We are required by federal statute and law to, to service any child who's identified, starting at the age of three, and for us, ending at eighth grade. But in the world, it goes up till their 22nd birthday. Hampton, we stop at, at eighth grade. But yeah, the law is ages three to 21 through their 21st year up to their 22nd birthday. Well, their, end of their 21st year. So yeah, it's a law. We have to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber, do you have any reports?
So my report was all about what we're doing with cybersecurity and ransomware attacks. So read it over. There's a lot of information in there. If you have any questions, you can reach out to us. We are doing lots of things. We're following, you know, what the state is recommending. We're on a bunch of listserv. So we're doing everything that we should be doing. We are looking at a few policies and procedures moving forward, but we're not looking at any major changes happening this school year, maybe just for next school year. There's a lot we still need to investigate. So we're working on it. Any questions?
Did you spend the $20,000 yet?
Mr. G has a wish list ongoing, and we have already spent a lot of money. But we're really excited because the kids are really into the podcasting now. And so we might be looking at asking for more money next year to expand those opportunities. But the kids are really liking it. And the podcasts are up on our YouTube channel now if anybody wants to take a look at them. So-
You don't sound excited at all about that, Amber.
The kids are really excited, and it's been great. They're doing a lot of really good things. So we're excited when the kids are happy. So, thank you.
Keith is out sick.
Oh.
Yep. Yep, he went home.
Is he still looking for help?
Yes.
He is.
All right. So if you are interested in a part-time, full-time, exciting job, call or email Keith Lassard. He's looking still for custodians, and he's willing to work with you on hours and shifts. So give him a call. Mary, now it's up to you.
I'm sharing her new breakfast menu.
First off, Happy New Year, everyone. Happy New Year. 2024. Good feeling. So before we left for break, I was going to implement a few things, new, new menu options. So we're doing a vegetarian here, and so far, it's been very well received. Kids are liking it. They're buying it, and we're making more each day. We started with like 30. Now we're up to 39 a day. We're probably going to go more than that. Breakfast menu, we're posting on the, on the website. So that'll change every month, but maybe, you know, pick up some more kids when they see the menu. They know what we're offering there. Meeting with, whom am I meeting with? Laura Bullard and Nicole Wilcox on Thursday with the Student Council at 2:30 to get some ideas from the kids. They're our customers and want to give them what they want to eat. Oh, and Donna Boardman's students, you can't see it, but they painted, not painted, made signs for us, like a pizza sign, and here's a hamburger. So they sketched signs for us. So we put them all over the cafeteria. Looks pretty, pretty nice. Inviting, right? Inviting. Don't know if you wanted to know what these parents owe us. So I think last time we talked, it was a little over 7,000. Now we're 5,000, a little over 5,000, district. So we'll get that down. It's just, it goes in, it goes out, it goes in, it goes out. Anything else? Well, it's exciting news for those people that have qualified for free and reduced lunch. The federal government is talking about giving them a $40 credit each month of the summer. So for June, July, and August, you get $40 for their food budget. So if you like 40 extra dollars in your wallet, fill out the form, and you'll be all set in June to get that program. So when I heard about it, I said, "I got to remind people" because you probably don't know, you could get extra money in the summer when your kids are home. And so it's a great thing to fill out the form.
And that's per child, correct?
Yes, per child.
Which is nice.
So if you had seven children, you'd be all set.
Right.
But, you know, but really, fill out the forms. We can use it. We really need you to do it.
Great.
Anything else?
That's great, Mary. Good job.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you. Dr. Costa.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to keep it brief and keep them with the meeting. Just some general announcements that we're, we're working. Keith Lassard and I are joining the Hampton Hub meetings, which is pretty exciting to see the plans and to think about what could happen in our, in our town in the not-too-distant future. One of the things that we talked about is that there could be some changes to the traffic pattern. That's something that we will have to really be mindful of. It was good to be on the forefront of those discussions because it will be something that could impact Hampton Academy. So exciting news for all of us, but just to be on the forefront of those discussions. And that was December 19th. Got to attend the senior holiday luncheon on the 22nd. Just again, a way to reach out to those people in our community who we may not see otherwise, although I am officially a member. So I can now go. I've reached that number that I am now welcome to join them. But it was good to see them and to join them right before the holidays. And you, just to let you know on your radar that the next, at our next meeting, that we will be hosting Casey Neal and Zach Sheehan from New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project, which will take place during our regular school board meeting. And it will be an opportunity for us to hear a little bit more about that, just to have it on your radar. They anticipate it taking about 40 minutes. So we'll look at how we plan all that meeting in February. And that everyone should attend. We'll, we'll make sure that we are inviting people in the community, SAU 21 included. So should be a good night for everyone. Just to kind of, as we move on to that second goal, one of the things that I get to keep track of is things like referrals, 988 referrals and otherwise. And those are down from last year, which is really great to see as a district. It's good to know that. And that the leadership team is going to participate in ICS 362 training, and that's kind of what Chief Reno was talking about in our efforts to broaden our understanding of multi-hazard emergency planning for schools. We will take part in that training. That was a recommendation that came out of our work this summer. So we will do that. And then kind of moving forward, there is going to be a district, actually, it's a regional reunification training that's going to take place in April with multi-districts in the CCOs around reunification. And there are seven of, seven of us who are going to be attending that training. That'll take place in April. So just another thing to put on your radar around safety. I included in here a copy of the scope and sequence of our work with demonstrated success as it relates to our curriculum work, specifically in language arts and mathematics. So that's there for your review. And that we are going to be sending a team to New Hampshire ASCD on March 22nd, which is specifically focused on teaching mathematics, again, one of the focal areas for curriculum. And then you know that our students are taking those mid-year assessments just to ensure that we're monitoring progress and we are aligning interventions and resources to support our students. And then on January 16th, the district RTI team will meet as we continue to talk about interventions and extensions. And I guess in closing, just to make you aware that there are about 200 students that do take off every Friday, thanks to the work of our wonderful schools, because I do know personally that this is an addition to your long weeks, but they have a blast. We have Marsden that is going off to McIntyre and Hampton Academy is going off to Pat's Peak in a Learn to Ski, Learn to Snowboard program. And I know that the kids absolutely love this, and the parents are just a huge, a huge help and support. So a shout out to our families and parents, and obviously, all of our staff that give up their Friday nights at the end of a very long week to provide this for our children. So I think that's probably enough for my report, unless you have any specific questions. And I also included a goals update for you in there as well, so you can see the kinds of things that we're working on and working towards. And I hope it's in a layout that helps you to better understand the outcomes. I know that we were playing with the format on that. So happy to take your questions.
Any questions? Draft calendar for 2024, 2025.
So as you probably are aware of, the, this, the CCO School of Technology, under the new law, has to ensure that the calendars of all sending high schools are pretty much in line. So there are probably about four or five high schools that send to CCO School of Technology. So to try to coordinate that has proven to be extremely challenging. So what we know, in speaking with Rhonda Evans in SAU 21, is that they are hoping to meet again on January 22nd, the CCO School of Technology. And if all goes well, they might be able to present it to the Joint Board on January 29th. So I can tell you that the, the only thing that we're really looking at at this point is professional development days. And that we, we know when the vacations will be. We know when we're going to start. But we are trying to have some alignment with those days to help our Hampton families, particularly since a lot of time, those Winnetonah High School students might be looking after some of the younger siblings. So just trying to, efforts to help our families. And also taking into consideration some feedback that we had regarding, you know, days before, you know, holidays or weekends. So we want to look at that as well. So hopefully, in February, we'll have a draft that we can look at. It's really PD.
Our enrollment.
Flat at 9:51. Exactly where we were a month ago.
Questions or comments on, all right. All right, Curtis, it's time for your report.
Did you want him to talk about seventh grade field trip? It's up to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, again. Seventh grade field, seventh grade field trip. Where are you taking the seventh graders?
Every year, they go to Canyon Beach Lake Park.
Yeah.
One of, I was trying to find out some information for you. And they haven't announced what time they're going to be opening yet. Their website is still closed for the season, like the park. So I'd like to know exactly when they're going to be opening. Last year, I heard it was 10 o'clock when I talked to Kim Warburton, who usually plans the trip. She said they usually open at nine, and she gets there at 8:45 to get the ticket so the kids can go right in. So I'd like to figure out exactly when they are going to be opening. If the buses came back later, I'd, you know, love for them to spend more time at the park. My larger concern would be for the kids who may not have parents to come pick them up and making sure they were back for the 3:35 late bus on that day. So if we could table it until I can get you some more accurate times and, and data, would that be okay?
Is it all right with the board?
Yeah, I mean, there's-
Okay. Thank you very much.
Now, Mariah, on the financial status of our-
Hello. So Thursday, we will be at the Town Hall. After Thursday, I will be posting, if all goes well, our warrant articles and budget information at the library, town office, and post office. Post office sometimes lets me. And if I do at the post office, it's usually not in the main entrance. It's where you get your mail. So it will be in those locations. But it will also be on our website at saun90.org. And if you go under Operations and then Business Office, you'll find it there. And then we have the deliberative session Monday, February 5th. And that's at 7:00 at, in the auditorium here at the academy. So that's just a reminder for that. Budget is, I'm just trying to pay attention to it, especially the special ed expenditures that is up. We are mindful of it. We are tracking it. We have everything encumbered. So it does look high. It is encumbered. It's not actual expenditures. But we are tracking that and paying attention to that. We have a few things going on with the facilities. We're working on RFP for the boiler and a few other RFPs to get some of the projects for facilities completed. So that'll give us a better idea with what funds we'll have for fund balance on stuff for facilities. But we're trying to tighten up our spending in those areas so that we do have some funds left over in accounts to help with the special ed department. Food service looks like it will be in a negative this year so far, if it's staying the track that it's staying. However, we had fund balance money left over from, still from the ESAR funds that were given to us. We didn't spend it all last year. That can be covered for some of that. So we should be okay in that department. So really, it's the special ed that I'm really mindful of right now. Other than that, we are working on how to promote our budget and explore that. So next school board meeting, we'll have a little video for you guys that we're working on. We're doing a cartoon on the budget for our budget and for the air quality at center. So that is something different. We're trying to get a little different ideas to get the wording out. So just a lot going on in this. Any questions from Mariah?
Just to reiterate, the special ed over-budget situation was caused by a student that needed special programs-
Yeah, we had unexpected-
-that we did not budget for when we put the budget together.
And a lot of it is transportation.
And most of it is transportation, correct?
Yep.
All right.
And we are mandated by federal law to provide those services.
And the transportation.
Anything on personnel?
Nope.
Policy reviews. We only have all first reads, right?
Yeah. And there's some that are being withdrawn. So-
The accomplishment reporting to the public is going to be withdrawn?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll take that one out.
And that was withdrawn by the New Hampshire School Boards Association. So-
And so does anyone want to move these policies to the next meeting? Because we have to-
I'll make the motion, move them to the next meeting.
Second. All those in favor? All those in favor? Approval of the minutes of December 12th.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on December 12th.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And did you, would you move the non-public now, Fran?
I'll make the motion to move the non-public on December 12th as well.
All those in favor? Is there a need for a non-public?
No, but I'd like to, I've got two items that I'd like to bring forward.
Okay.
Okay. My first item is, I, I realize that the superintendent is nearing the, close to her contractual obligations with the district, and I'd like to make a motion to extend her contract an additional three years.
I'll second.
Okay.
I mean, we can discuss it. We can discuss it.
You should, go ahead, open for discussion, or would you? You can't approve that motion yet. You have to have discussion on the, on the motion.
Oh, you're, okay, so your, your microphone is muted, apparently. I can hear Nick. Your mic is off? There you go.
You had that?
Push it again. It's still green.
You had that information?
I do.
I can kind of hear Nick yelling through or something.
Okay, you want it on?
They want it on.
I'm sorry. My, my question is, how long is Dr. Costa's contract that she currently has?
She has that information.
Year four, and it's of six years is where I am right now. So, so after this year, there's two years.
Okay, so this would just add a year?
So we're just adding three years.
Oh, you're.
So she's, I guess my point is.
Yes.
And I get the years mixed up. You are already under contract through 2026? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And this motion, you said three years? This would put her under contract till 2029?
That's if you voted positively, that's what it would do, yeah.
Don't take offense. I think that's too far in the future.
Well, I'd, I'd like to comment on that particular section. We've done this in the past with no issue at all. We extended it two years ago, and we added three years, and there was no problem with that. And we'd done it prior to that, and we've done it for the previous superintendent. So I don't see that there's an issue.
Well, I think the issue, if I may, I think the issue is you're going, I have to write this down.
I know, it's, the math is.
Again, Lois, your current contract expires year 26.
Yep.
Okay. And your proposal is, is to make it expire in 2029. And I will stand by what I said. I think that's too long. We have done it in the past, but I don't think we've ever been, one, two, I don't think we've ever been five years out, but I'd stand corrected.
Yes, we have.
Okay. If, if we have, we can look it up, okay?
Well, my, what I was going to say was, so if she currently has a six-year contract, then we went six years out.
I don't know if that's so.
Lois just said she has a six-year, she's in year four of her, of a six-year contract.
Okay.
So essentially.
Okay, that's fine.
No, I know, I was just, I was also trying to figure out the math on it.
I'm going to stand by what I said.
Yep.
I think that's too far. If someone wanted to make it an additional two years, I would probably go for it, but I'm not going to go that far, and it has nothing to do. Things change, and I think that's too far out.
All right, then, if, bowing to that, then I'd like to make an amendment to my original proposal and extend it two additional years.
Okay.
Through 2028?
Yes.
I, I would go along with that.
Okay.
All right, so I will, do I have to second the amendment? Yes, okay.
Is there any other discussion? There being no other discussion, we are voting to extend Dr. Costa's contract to 2028.
Just one more quick.
Sure.
The financial part that goes along with that will be determined later.
Later.
Yeah, it goes every year.
At each budget review.
Yes, yes.
Confirming. Thank you.
All those in favor? It's unanimous.
And my final, before we adjourn, is I know that this has been out there for quite some time, but as everyone knows, that the elections are coming up. And I just want to say that I will not, again, not be running for the next three years. I feel nine years is enough to serve on the board. I understand that there's a potential candidate that's running, Molly St. Jean, McCoy St. Jean. Very young, very innovative. I, I think the board needs new, fresh ideas and new, fresh blood. So having said that, I'd like to say that I am going to support her in hopes that she wins my seat.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? There being none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make the motion to adjourn.
And is there a second?
I will second.
There's a motion that's been made and seconded to adjuring. All those in favor? Thank you very much.